Alright, it's recording now.
Alrighty, oh wait, one more minute, six fifty-five, six forty-five, excuse me. Six forty-five, I recall the order of the meeting. Roll call. I understand that Julie and Hillary may not be able to make it. Oh, there she is there. Alright, Julie, I don't think is gonna be able to make it.
Right.
Alrighty. Alrighty, the roll call. Let me see, Mike, Gary, Roberta, Megan, Hillary, Molly. Alrighty, I would, at this time, would like to make a motion to put something, to add something to the agenda under new business. I forgot to put it down before, a motion that next meeting, next month, that we will elect and appoint the offices of the Conservation Commission President, Vice, excuse me, being Trump both. You know, Chairman, Vice, Treasurer. Yeah. So I make a motion that we put that under new business, we'll discuss whether we want, we'll discuss and vote whether we want to add it to the agenda to hold that. To hold that, that vote next, next meeting. Can I have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
I.
I, already, motion passes, we'll put that under new business. Alrighty. Next item, review and approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of November tenth, twenty twenty. Does everybody had the opportunity to read them? Do we find any corrections, any additions, subtractions, anything that notion made? Already, I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
Second.
Second it, all in favor?
I.
I opposed, none. Alrighty. I gotta go quick now, because I saw the way the last meeting went, I thought, oh my goodness. Tuned into it like it was all over.
Hillary is efficient.
Oh, yeah.
She's good.
Only correspondence we received this month was the. I get wildlife. That's the only one we received this month. There was no other correspondence. I do not see anybody else, if there's any public comments. No, already. Informational items, I really don't have any informational items this month. Alrighty, property walks. When the Bog Bridge was being built, I walked down through Burton Trail, and it still looks fine, there's no problems whatsoever. Since we just had that recent windstorm this week, I haven't been back, but before then it was perfectly fine. Whitehall. I've been up to Whitehall a couple of times. I contacted somebody to come and brush hog it. He keeps saying, yeah, 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 I'll get to it, I'll get to it, we have not yet been able to hook up yet, so I can show him what wants to be done. I'm hoping I can still get ahold of him, get him updated, brush hog that upper field. But the paths and everything else look good, I think there's one small tree, maybe, what, six inch diameter, across the path, and you can just step over it, it's no problem, other than that, everything looks fine. I, this is not one of our trails, but I took a walk on the Tri-Town Trail. I recommend people do it. It's, it's really interesting. Just remember, then once you get over the bridge, and you start to get on the side of the hill there, is like, gullies, they haven't bridged all of those yet, so they can be a little wet after it's rained. And it's, it's, I would not call it difficult, it's not as bad as Glacier, but it's a little rocky. And when you come down around the other side, you come down along with the, the stream, remember that lower field is open to bow hunting. Okay, I don't know exactly what the.
Did you start at the Preston? Press, did you start at the Preston line?
Yes, I did.
Okay, okay.
I went all the way down to where I guess they're proposing to put the other bridge.
Yeah, okay.
Right down there, and then the trail keeps going down, but they said that's closed off. I just didn't bother walking that one there, and I came all the way back, but it's, 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 it's interesting. I don't see where they need a bridge to get an ambulance, because I don't see how they'd ever get an ambulance to the woods up there, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
You know? I don't think it's gonna happen in our lifetimes, I mean, you're talking heavy construction equipment, you're talking grading, it's, that's multimillion dollar projects, but it's a nice trail, it's a nice little trail.
It is, it is, yeah.
It's about a mile down, a mile back. So it's, it's, you know, you can park a car one end, you know, park a car, walk, and then have it like when you canoe a river.
Right, there's also plenty of parking right across the street in the Preston Community Park.
Yes, there is, yeah, and then they have a little parking field up there too. So I probably handle maybe half a dozen cars. So anyone else taking any property walks or anything?
I walked on Burton to see that Bog Bridge, very nice. I think it was a good job worth doing.
Yeah, I walked on Burton too with my kids, and they all, they loved it, they actually went on the bridge back and forth several times.
Well, I'll talk a little bit more about it, it's a little bit further down here in the agenda, a few other little items about it. Uh, trail blazes at the LLC maintained trails. You haven't done any blazes?
I haven't, no, but I've talked to my husband, and I thought, you know, could we go out and like, do the other side of the yellow Burton Trail these, and he said, yeah, I'll do it with spray paint, so if we could get a purchase order, I, I don't know the, the process of, if we could get, I know, I guess we need a purchase order before we go out and buy the spray paint. Then.
We have to vote on it first, we vote on it and say yes, approved, and then I, you can actually call into Nicole and say, would you create a purchase order for the Conservation Commission?
Okay, do I need to know, would, would I need to know like, how much it costs first?
Yes, or you could say up to ten dollars or up to twenty dollars.
Yes.
So.
I just went through the entire process for the Bog Bridge. Okay, you get an estimate of what you're gonna need and everything else like that, submit the estimate to Nicole, so she can get a purchase order for it, and then she'll give you the purchase order, she may give you, she might even give you the, the purchase order number, right, then you submit the bill to them, and they attach it, alrighty. It's, it's, it's relatively simple, it's just that we've been doing it kind of backwards, we've been getting things and then ordering it.
So. So can I make a motion to, what was the wording? Make a motion to create a purchase order for spray paint?
Let's, right? Let's say this here, make a motion to purchase. Make a motion to purchase spray paint to do the marking of the trails, alright? Okay, so let's make that motion, it's a motion to purchase spray paint to mock the trails, okay?
Thank you, I'll make that motion.
Second it?
Second.
All in favor? I, okay, any, well, usually we have discussions, but anyway. Right, what you'll do now is, we passed a motion to get the spray paint, alrighty, so get the spray paint. Well, I'm saying, get your estimate, well, you probably gotta know what it is when you buy it, and then send it into Nicole, Nicole will make the purchase order and forward it from there, alrighty?
And you can call her on the phone.
Yes, you can call her on the phone, she's very, very helpful.
So once I have the purchase order, then do I buy it with my own money and get reimbursed? Is that how it works?
If you, yes, if you go to Holdages, if you go to Holdages, the town has an account with Holdages.
Okay, okay.
Okay, because I've done that before, well, once before with Holdage, if you go somewhere else, the town does not have an account with them.
I'll go to Holdages.
Go to Holdages, I believe Holdages has an account.
But I'll talk to Nicole first to do the purchase order, okay, thank you.
Yep, okay. Now, is this one we can put to bed, hike ledged? Hike ledged program, that's all.
So, yeah, so, um, last, was it last time we talked about the logo, we, we decided to move, so I got copies of the files for each of the versions of the logo, but we're gonna move forward with the version that's the yellow border. And so my next step is to, Scott Johnson, the director of Parks and Rec, wanted to meet to see how, you know, we could work together for the program moving forward, and he, he even offered, he said, you know, we, we have some, some budget, some funds, you know, that we could even help out with that, and so what I'm thinking is maybe if I could have them buy like, like stickers or something, stickers of the logo, so that way, anyone, everyone who registers for the program can like, pick up a sticker at, you know, the park, from the Parks and Rec office. That's kind of what I'm thinking so far. As far as that, and then I will, I was also thinking, by the time we meet again next time, I'll create the online store essentially, which is, would be through like Teespring, it's, it's free, people would just go and like, you know, if, if they want, you know, a hike ledged shirt or whatever, or a hike ledged tote, they would just buy it from there, and it gets shipped directly to them, there's no overhead, we don't, you know, collect anything from it, it's just like the very direct, so there's no middleman. So those are, those are my thoughts. And then this program would be then like officially launched in the spring. And we should be all ready to have it go, you know, by the spring. I would like to see like a flyer in the Ledyard Events Magazine for the program. That's, that's my, that's all, that's all I got. So, so I'll, I was thinking I'll meet with Scott, and then I'll get back to you guys next month with the, with, you know, what, what Scott can, you know, says Parks and Rec can contribute. If they're interested in doing that.
So Megan, would it be worthwhile to, when you get the Lego, logo all in place, to have that go on our website and say, this is what the logo for hike ledged will look like? Just to have it on our website out there, so people see what it's, I mean, you said you had such a good response, I would think those people might follow our website and be interested.
In seeing what the logo looks like, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, if you participate in our hike ledged, here's the kind of logo that'll be available in a variety of products or something like that, you know.
Yeah.
I don't know if, if it's too early to do that now, or if you would wait till later in the spring?
Um, that is a good question, I was planning on waiting, and I'm, I don't know, I, I like, I mean, I've, I have asked the like hike ledged community for input on the logo before, and just kind of left him hanging, so I could let them see, you know, what, you know, the direction that, that it's going. I think people could be interested in that, and you know, keep it, keep it going, but I would not post a link to like the store or anything, that's something that people register for the program, like ledged Parks and Rec to get, you know, access to that.
No, it was more a response to the people who came back to you and said they were interested and, and stated their preferences for what they'd like, you know.
You're right, I should not leave them hanging.
So the, the sticker idea is, the idea is that the sticker is the same as the patch, it's just a sticker version of it?
Essentially, yeah, that, that's what I was, what I was thinking, and so, the, yeah, I mean, because a sticker is, is cheap, it's like less, like twenty-five cents, no more than a dollar, depending on like, you know, big you get it. But it's something too that can like help to advertise the program, or like foster this sense of belonging in the hike ledged communities, I kind of like that. And then the, the patch, or the t-shirt, or the tote bag is a little bit, you know, more expensive, and maybe like those are for the people who, you know, visit each of the like park trail areas, what do you think, what are you thinking?
Well, I just, one thing I don't like about stickers is that they're disposable, right, but you can get these, you can get those that aren't. You know, like the, I'm thinking of the Long Island Sound Study ones that have been around, that they're made to put on your water bottle, and you can wash, you can wash the water bottle in the dishwasher, like they don't come off, like they're, they're kind of, that, that might be out of our price range for this, but it could be worth looking into if, whether it could be worth us, you know, that, then we wouldn't be generating like trash, right?
Yes, I, I really, really liked that idea, the, the stickers that I was looking at was, were like the vinyl type stickers, where it's like dishwasher, you know, safe kind of thing, like it's not gonna come off in the dishwasher, but I mean, you're right, like.
No, I think that makes it less, that makes it not disposable, so, and I think one thing I've learned, I've handed out a lot of stickers for Long Island Sound Study, is that you have to explain carefully and over and over to people that it's not a disposable sticker. Because they're like, is a sticker, and they put it on their clothes, and then it's like, no, it goes on your water bottle, it goes on like.
Yeah, and I really like that idea of like, you know, keeping it sustainable, or, you know, not, not disposable.
Or whatever, yeah.
But highlighting that, make sure people don't throw it away, yeah, no, that's, that, that's what I was thinking, but those were the words, those words sound better. So, I, I have looked at it before, I just, it, you know, it depends like how many you order too, so the more that you order, the less expensive it is per sticker, and so when I priced it out before, I think I was looking at like, a sticker that was like, three inches tall by two inches for the logo shape. And the price point, I, again, it was, it was, I know, I remember it was less than a dollar, and again, depending on how many, it could be like, you know, oh, twenty-five cents up to a dollar, and so I was, so, so I'd like to see what Parks and Rec is comfortable with, you know, how, how they're comfortable with participating and supporting the program, and then seeing like, you know, how many, what we can do with that, originally, when I did the like hike ledged-ish survey in March, just to see if there'd be even interest in the hike ledged program, I, one of the questions was, you know, like, would you be interested in this type of a program, and, you know, are there other people in your household that might also be interested, and I like added all those numbers up, and it was like, I, I wanna say, like, I'm, like a hundred eighty-eight or two hundred eighty-eight, like it's somewhere around two hundred people said that, so. So, yeah, so I would think like, like, maybe at least two hundred fifty stickers, or they like start with that kind of thing. That's what I'm thinking, that's all, that's, and that's, that's all I got, thank you for bringing up that. Everything.
Yeah, trying to find, I, we, we had some stickers printed like, I don't know, pre-pandemic, so like, ten years ago, it feels like, I'll try to find who we used, I think we did some research on like, you know, who was the most conservative, but I'll, I'll get back to you on that.
Okay, okay, thank you, yeah, I was looking at, um, Sticker Me, I think is the one that I was looking at.
I think I went out of order, and I skipped one of the items on the agenda, I like to go back to it, the signage at Burton Trail. It's been so long since we discussed it, it's been so long since we looked at ideas, that, and I wanted to find out, I wanted to straighten out what our budget was too, which I think I sent an email to everybody, that I, we got it all straightened out already, so before I committed any signs or anything, I wanted to make sure we had sufficient funds for. We're all familiar with signs that are like a glacier, Whitehall, and everything else like that, do we want something similar to that? That's the first place I want to start, I'll be looking at the same type of thing, so they're all uniform, or are we looking to go somewhere, some, some, something different? Does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, the sign I looked at, at the Lamb Property Trail, they had some other pieces added to it that the sign could be similar to what we already have, but we could gradually put some additions on it that make it more useful to people who come and look at it before they head off on the trail. Now, our trail maps being available are a big thing, and they include a lot of the information, but I do think there might be other things that could be added along the sides or the bottom of a map that would be useful. Not to stray far from what we already have, but.
This, this is where, this is where I think you, you know, I think we talked about it a while ago. You know, I, I like what you said, I think you kind of, you add to it, but that's where you can bring in the, you like the, I don't know what you call them, the QR codes or a link, they're put on, you know, on them now, you know, that's, you can keep it similar, but now it's got that added feature to where a cellphone can easily take a.
You could pick up your trail map right there.
Right. Yeah.
For our codes. Because if you look at the one at Whitehall, you'll see there is other signs that have been attached over time. So that's why I was thinking, having the same basic thing that allows us enough room and space to add other things, but the QR code in it to be awesome, or whatever you would call it, onto it, along with the trail map, probably would be a good idea right off the bat.
There may be people who come to the trails and don't even know the maps are available, so that would at least get them to a site that has the map on it, which would enhance the use of our site, and, you know, more people would know about it, I would think.
The thing I was wondering was where the trailhead starts, which is behind the softball field. Nobody's gonna see the sign there, but then again, if the trail starts, would we think about putting it out near the road next to that monument? Now, that's not where the trailhead starts, but there's really no place to park there, but it calls attention to the, it is there.
Is it worth it to have a smaller sign there saying, trailhead map at the parking lot, or something like that? Um, when I came out behind the softball field, I cannot imagine putting a sign there, nobody will even know it's there.
That's what I mean. That's why I was thinking that if we put, let's say the signs like we have at Whitehall, and we have it, it, it's a glacier, but you had it on the road, so people could see it, then had another sign at the trailhead with, let's say, another map, and also, let's say, the QR code there. You see what I'm trying to say, one we go for advertisement, and the other one would be actually to mock the trailhead, is what I've been thinking, so would that actually require two signs, one like we normally have, and then something else, what the trailhead behind the softball field?
And actually, I wonder if on a map on the road there, just wanted to call attention to it, and you really have to note that there's another trail opening there next to that little park.
Yeah, my only concern with putting, you know, a sign that, like the cemetery, they already have a sign there, but it's such a busy section of road that I would not want to encourage people to access the trail from that trailhead. But I think do it like, putting up a sign, you know, like Burton Trail, and then maybe an arrow or something, or like Burton Trail parking that way, or you know, like you were saying, that's like advertising it. And putting up the, the actual trailhead sign behind the softball field, kind of like, yeah, I don't know, but yeah, I, my concern is it's not encouraging people to start from, like directly on Gallup Hill Road at that curve.
So what you'd be looking at is, we'd be looking at the, our regular signs that we have around behind the softball, but we'd have a smaller sign that would, some indicating that's where the trail was to advertise it, maybe something similar to the size of the cemetery sign, maybe a little bit bigger to get your attention, but something to designate that both of those places are there. Okay, alrighty. Alright, I'll work on something like that.
My only other thought is whether we need a sign from the parking area, you know, the gravel parking area to get to the back of the softball field, like, an arrow, like go this way, but that, like, that's, that's high school property, and so that, you know, brings another layer of complication to it.
I think in the parking area there though, at the far end, if you have something there that says, trailhead this way or something, you know, because you do have nice posts there by the parking area, it isn't something, somebody can take a post and have it disappear, it has to be something that can't get moved, if you will. And that's where most people are gonna park.
I'm hoping that they would see that there is trails there, from the sign on the road that advertises where it is. They would be curious enough, curious enough to, let's say, look it up, and then see, you know, online, where the trails were and stuff, and be able from there, because you have one, and then you made a jog, then you make another jog, then you make another, and they're not gonna allow us to put a half a dozen signs showing where it is, that's the only thing that would concern me about having another one in the parking lot.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, I'm hoping that they'd say, oh wow, there's a trail there, we've never heard about this trail, let's look it up, and then they would look it up online, and they'd say, oh yeah, this is where the parking is, and this is where the thing is. It's, it's a unique situation, I think it's a little difficult to have it too clear cut, also again, is it's a school, it's high school, so you'd have to get permission from them, and I don't know how they, they would feel. So that's what I'll probably be looking at, then, a regular sign for behind the softball field, and something, a small sign to advertise that we've got something back there, but not something that would attract people. In other words, not a map on that, not a QR on that, that would encourage people to stop there, but just something to inform that this is Burton Trail, is it, or Burton Preserve, or something like that. Even if I didn't write trail, I could write Burton Preserve. You know what I mean, that way they would, they would know it was a preserve without really, you know, you could say preserve and trail, you know what I mean? Like sometimes you'll drive around, you'll see the Avalonias, it'll have a sign that'll say Avalonia, you know what I mean, preserve or something of that nature, just to advertise that it's there.
Mike, is there a specific edge to the Board of Ed property and the conservation property there behind the school?
That stone wall.
But behind the softball field, as you come up the hill there, is that where it's gonna be?
No, no, I would have it at the entrance to the trailhead, which would be the other side of the stone wall, right where the trail begins.
So you'd be going down the hill a little bit before you got to it?
No, you come from the parking lot, and you, you'd come up around the grass and around the back of the. The, the softball field. And then there's that stone wall, the opening of the stone wall with the trail and I would have it there.
Okay.
Just on the side of the stone wall where it's on. You know, conservation commissions side of the line. I think would avoid. You know, a lot of red tape.
Too bad we can't practice with paper signs and say, how good is this?
Alrighty. Alright, so I'll, I wanted, like I said, I wanted to get some ideas first before I started on the signs and I wanted to finish the bog bridge first before I started on a new project there. Alrighty, so that's, I'll start looking into that and I'll have a whole bunch of ideas next month. Alrighty. Seeing how we shifted around the agenda and items discussed, I like the shift a little bit more. Before we get into a real perhaps detailed conversation. But I want to go to the construction of the bog bridge. What it was, we were going to originally build it with two by eight, two by 10, eight foot planking. And the lumber was not available, the quantity was needed, so we had to go to 12 foot. That required another support underneath it. So basically it landed up, the estimate was 1550 and the final bill was 1750. Alrighty, and he built that. Uh, that will come out of the trail, making its fund. And we did get the. Payments to CCOG. I went through the mayor's office and everything else like that. We've got that all straightened out and I guess they took care of it. They never informed us. And so that was taken out.
Well, it did, it did only happen after the new budget was put out so that. It was what, what we started with is not what we originally thought we started with.
Right.
So instead of starting with. 4,715, it went down to 4,000, 3,290. So we did really have less in the trail budget than we thought. Once it got taken out earlier than the 20, this year's, the new budget started.
Right.
It's the same amount of money, just got moved from one year to the next.
So basically I think at this present time, we still have 17, roughly $1,700 out of account. So that should be able to take care of the signage with, with no problem.
I have 1540, Mike.
Okay, yeah.
I picked it up today.
Oh, beautiful, beautiful, already.
And I'll also tell you while I have your ear on it that. The Whitehall total that's still, that's available if we need is 23,909 dollars and 89 cents.
Cool.
Okay.
Yeah, good, good. Still not going to pay that guy 20, $4,200 to brush hog it though. Alright, that's, that's great. Alrighty.
Um, I don't know if we'll be coming up with, oh yeah, I see it later on the agenda, nevermind.
Yep. Facts, we can go to it now, now that we're discussing funds. I discuss the donation to the Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, the Connecticut Land Conservation Council in Avalonia.
I can tell you that every other year we gave a $500 membership fee to. The Conservation District, Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. And last year we sent 150 to the Land Conservation Council.
Right, right. And again this year here, they're asking for 250 or more, 150, 100 or above. The Connecticut Land Conservation Council.
Not too super familiar with the Connecticut Land Conservation Council, like what, what kind of entity are they?
Oh, okay. I'm trying to remember exactly what they've done.
Well, they put on a conference every year.
Are they like a, like a state nonprofit partnership or are they, is it a nonprofit? Is it a, like a, I'm just.
It's a nonprofit.
Okay.
Yes. It's located in Middletown, Connecticut. I'm trying to see if they sent us.
I actually don't think we got anything from them this year, Mike.
No.
What do you mean?
Usually, usually we get a flyer, they're having a conference and they also send a request for money, which we didn't get yet and. Maybe they're not having a lot of meetings either. Just read you what they had to say. Other years. Connecticut Land Conservation Council. So they put on a conference, usually it's in Middletown and. They do workshops for groups, they do advisory consultation if you have weird questions about something you don't know about. They represent conservation. Commissions at the Capitol. They keep watch for conservation issues that come up so they can. Stay with their in favor of and not in favor of. They go, they have a, go to the legislative meetings.
I got you. So they're, they're, they're established to support conservation commissions.
All across the state.
And, but they have, but they're separate so that they have the flexibility to lobby.
Yeah.
Got it.
And collect money.
Like money, yes, and fundraise. Yeah, that makes sense.
And there's a whole list of people and stuff they do, but they'd be happy for whatever we send them. I suspect.
Well, let's, alright, we'll, we'll look at all of them here. The other one is Eastern Connecticut Conservation District. And they always ask us for a thousand and we always end up sending them what, 500, don't we?
500.
Yes.
And they're primarily in this corner of the state.
Yes.
And each region has a council like that. This is just the one here in southeastern Connecticut.
I'm familiar with them. They do some really great work. Like I'm mostly familiar with like their work on Fish Passage. Including, you know, the Hoville Dam right there and yeah.
And didn't they, a number of years ago, Roberto, aren't they the ones that we worked in conjunction with doing up at. That boat landing?
Well, Pocatonic, yeah.
Pocatonic?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's where we got some of the. Plant material that we used and they also provided us with a list of plants and. You know, information to help us make good decisions. And they're up in Norwich Town.
Their office, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Norwich and Brooklyn already. And the other one is from, the other request is from Avalonia. Seem to find Eric Avalonia is what they were looking for. But even the Avalonia requests were. 25, 50, 100, things of that nature there. So those are three different requests we can consider. The Eastern Connecticut Conservation District, they seem, like I said, we worked with them before. Molly, you're very familiar with them, seem to have a good word for them. So I would, I would like to send them a contribution again. They also did send us a. A fiscal report of what they spent the money on and also a newsletter outlining some of the projects they've done. You know, for the year. So, and I also, they have a list of all the towns that have. Contributed and like you said, it seems like everybody in the eastern, at least here, Preston, Brooklyn. Talland, everything over in this area here, everybody seems to have contributed to them. So as, you know, I'd recommend that we would send them a donation, the Connecticut Land Conservation Council. Did any of us partake at one time in one of their seminars or something?
I went to one of them.
Right. Did you think it was worth it?
I thought it was. It was really interesting. A lot of the legal stuff that they talked about and different ways to preserve land using grants and other methods. It had a lot of interesting information.
Yeah, because I remember also you, you, you requested the fee for attending, right? It wasn't free for the, go to the. The seven hour, was it?
It wasn't. I think it was around $90 and the town was willing to pay for it.
Yeah, yeah.
And you had a choice of what you could attend, right? There were multiple. Areas of information and you could pick the one you were most interested in, correct?
I think there were like three, three or four different classes at each time slot and you just picked which one you were most interested in at each time slot.
Right.
Said like normally they would send us a request and they haven't done so this year.
Well, yeah, they request, I bet it, I got it here, they did send a request.
But they didn't send anything about the conference. I'm guessing they probably canceled that because of COVID.
No, I didn't see anything about any conferences. No. I don't know if you can go online and go to their website. And they may have had them, you know, virtual or not. I did not investigate that.
And we, do we normally contribute to them? Like every, is this a?
Yeah, we usually send, about a couple of years back, we sent 100 and last year it was 150 we sent.
So how does people feel about it? They feel it's worthwhile?
Well, I think if you ever wanted to use their services, it's worth being a contributing member. And I don't think that's a lot of money to potentially have them be aware that you're here.
Alrighty.
Well, it's very tricky to go to an organization that you haven't supported and ask them to do something for you. Or help you or give you advice or whatever. It might also keep us informed about what other. Conservation commissions are doing in other places. We've never done that, but going to the conference probably gives you some of that information.
They do have a little thing in here, like a sort of a mission statement thing that says, your support enables the. CLCC to build on its mission to advocate for land conservation stewardship and funding and work to ensure a long-term strength, viability of land conservation. For land conservation community across Connecticut.
Worthwhile to me, although I think it'd be interesting to. Continue to send people to the conferences so we have a better sense of what they do. You know, like moving forward rather than just.
Send money.
Yeah, like send somebody in, well, once there's conferences again, sounds like that might not be an option for now, but.
Alrighty, and like I said, the other one's Avalonia. Avalonia's got more money than the state.
You usually send Avalonia money? Like is this a normal thing or is this the first time they've asked or?
This is the first time they've asked. This is the first time I, they've asked and I don't know about anybody else. But I've been bombarded by requests from Avalonia on my emails for the first time ever. So I think it's part of a huge fundraising effort they're making is going to be my presumption.
Well, I think that Avalonia. Purchased that large piece of property, Preston, Ledyard. Who else is there? Three towns, Griswold maybe.
Yeah.
And they don't usually get a piece offered to them like Ledyard's offering them paint mill. Most of the property they have to. Partially, if not all purchase. So I think they're. Looking for funds to continue to do that. I guess it depends on how many people support Avalonia in the town of Ledyard anyhow. And what properties do they actually maintain in Ledyard? For us to decide, should we support them? They do own a lot of property in Ledyard now and they're picking up that new property over off of the Lester House. You know, down from the Lester House, Durham and. What's the other, what's the other one there? There's two pieces there. So that's another big piece in Ledyard that they'll have and Paint Mill will add another large piece. Is that, that's about 100 acres, isn't it, Mary?
What, the Paint Mill? I don't know. Yeah, at least I think, yeah.
A 98.6 is about 100, yes.
Yeah.
They do, there are major, kind of our major partner, right? Like most of the land is either town or Avalonia.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean. When I go hiking and I think, oh, I must have done a property walk and now it's, no, that one was Avalonia.
The other thing we could do is not necessarily make that decision now till we see if other big expenses come along. Like doing the signs or something and then we could always vote them an amount. As we get nearer to the end of our budget. If we want to do that.
Yeah, you know, because I, this, I haven't been through this process with this commission, but I was like kind of surprised to learn that one of the things we do is donate money to other. Organizations. And it seems like there is some danger, I mean, I support the missions of all these organizations, but it seems like there is some danger if we. Start donating to all the worthwhile nonprofits around. I mean, there are many. Then we wouldn't have a budget to do stuff. So it does seem like a balance. You know, like our primary mission should be to. Yeah, I agree that we should get a, maybe get a quote for the signs.
Alrighty. Okay.
Avalonia is not going away.
No.
No, so.
I'm sure they'll take, they'll take a check anytime.
That's right. I think that the, a couple of these others that we were talking about are different because they do. Across the state lobbying and share information on what's going on out there about. Obtaining grants and what's available for commissions to use to be more efficient or more knowledgeable. That is not Avalonia's role at all. That's just my own feeling.
Then how about it, like I say. I'll go through the. Get the quotes for the signs to get that all together, figure out that's going to cost us, see what we have left in. And then perhaps may we might actually also discuss. What other projects we may want to tackle in the new year. And come up with kind of an idea of what we want. And we could see how much we could. It's like we do before we do a tax at the end of the year. We figure how much we can, you know, give to charity.
Charity begins at home, Mike.
Yeah, I should have helped and carry those lumber down. Alright, so let's, we'll, we'll postpone any decision on this until next month. Alright.
Um. Is it, should I make a motion on the two that we always do or do you want to hold all of them?
Let's hold all of them.
Okay.
Let's hold all of them because I'm looking at them as a total. It's all donations and. Let's hold all of them, because I'm looking at them as a total, it's all donations, and you're gonna try to invite up who gets what, how we should go about it, so we, I'm trying to look at it as a whole.
Um, the other one that we did at one time, a thing came from, uh, Cackey Whack.
Yeah.
And we, um, they always sent it out as, uh, if you had one commission from your town be a member, or two commissions, they changed what they asked for, and we found that, um, I think it was, somebody, another commission already was a member, so we stopped
Right.
sending a contribution to them, so that was just another piece that we did cut back doing one, uh, I think two years ago.
Yeah, I believe that was inland waterways.
Yeah.
Which, okay, brings me to another point that I wanted, another bar bridge. We did not need a permit, we needed the okay from inland waterways, but we did not need a permit, because it was considered a, uh, uh, I'm trying to think of the word. It was a use right, it's town property, we didn't divert any water, we didn't dam anything up, we didn't dig. It's considered, you have a right, it's a, uh, Mary might know the term, I'm thinking of it.
I'm trying to think of it now.
It's when you have a piece of property and you, you're allowed to do something by right.
Right, yeah, you're not harming the, you're not harming the wetlands, and it's, it's an allowable, that's not the word, but it's an, an allowable um, project in the wetlands.
Right, and so that's a future reference in case we have to do anything else like that again.
Right, right.
We, we shouldn't have any problem, uh, next time. Alright.
Permitted activity, it's a permitted activity.
Permitted activity, that's the word I was thinking, yes, the term, it's permitted activity by right, yes. Alrighty. The other item, off-leash trail, I think last time I sent you the, was the environmental report for Whitehall, and again, at that time, they didn't find anything of any special interest, but then again, they said, perhaps you can do a more detailed survey of it. Alrighty, uh, everywhere I look, on all your state land, all your management areas, all your wildlife refuges, every single place, dogs are leashed. I'm not sure whether this place classifies to that level or not. Uh, I don't know, does anybody have any thoughts on it?
Would it be worthwhile to look for somebody who's knowledgeable in looking for unusual plants or, um, anything that's on this property that we should be concerned about protecting?
What we can do is, because you told me, I was, I'm very, very surprised that there's that much money in the trust fund for Whitehall. This last report was done, I think, what, seventeen years ago? There perhaps, we could have somebody, because not only would it contribute to this conversation about having off-leash dogs, it may behoove us to have an update done again, that we could be used to formulate a, uh, a maintenance plan for Whitehall, if we had an updated report.
And potentially, if there's something there, even a grant.
It's potential, yes, yes.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's kind of two things there that are a little bit separate, but I think if we're talking about future projects, I think having that kind of assessment done on the properties that we're responsible for isn't a bad idea, like, just kind of independent of the leash dog issue. Um, I, I just, I'm not a fan of rushing into designating an off-leash property, I think it'll be really hard to take it back once we do it. Um, and I, I'm not aware that we're getting like any pushback to do it quickly, so I, I would say hold off on that for now. Um.
Maybe I'll ask, um, the Ledged group from Avalonia, who they use to get assessments on their property.
Yeah.
And we could, um, you know, uh, ask a person like that how much they cost and what they actually look for, and how long it would take, and all that kind of stuff, and then we could make a decision, uh, you know, later in the spring, when there's more to see maybe, that's out there, growing, or?
That's when they recommended it.
Yeah.
They recommended it in spring.
But we could do all the looking for what we have to do or wanna do now, and then in the spring, we'd be ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, like find out what we would need to budget for that, and is this something that we'll, we would want to, like, do like a property every couple of years and work through them, or could we, like, I, I don't have a good sense of what it costs, I think it might not be that expensive, I, I don't know.
I have no idea.
Yeah, if you have a contact.
What are you looking for this assessment to tell you?
Uh, if there's something we should be protecting on the property?
Okay.
Yes.
So, yeah, I think species of concern, Connecticut species of concern, those kinds of things, and also, I think a, a biological inventory of sort of what we have in these properties, like, even if they're not like species of concern, I think notable, um.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, like, I, I think it would be nice, we all sort of have a sense of what these properties are like, but it would be nice to have, um, you know, some, some data on them.
And if you did it on a routine basis, even if it's every ten years, which is not a bad thing, um, you would know if you have more invasives present or less, and, but, you know, we don't know if there's more now, cuz most of us didn't know it ten years ago, kind of thing, so um, the comparison is really what could drive what we do on some properties.
Yeah, I would, I think it might help us, you, you're right, Roberta, I think it would help us identify if there are issues that we're like not noticing, or like waterway issues are, um, that might, yeah.
There was a thing in the paper today that in East Lime, they noticed, um, stuff floating on the top of the water going into Gordon Pond, and sure enough, it was from a development that's being built at least three, four miles away, under ninety-five, the water goes and everything. So for them to have noted that there was something happening with the water that far away, they had to know what it's been like all along, cuz somebody monitors that pond. So we're not monitoring any of the waterways that go through our properties, you know, if there were any, so I think those kinds of things are valuable for us to, um, have some information about.
I know Ledge Light Health District does monitor, um, some of the bodies of water around here, though, and so they might have some.
They might have some data already, yeah, on water quality.
Yeah, they do, they do do that.
As, as it affects the, yeah, like the, the reservoir, like that, that part of the watershed, yeah.
And I think for the fish ladder, like there at Hall's.
Um, well, if you go on EPA's Find My Waterway, like EPA has an awesome website where you can look, if you guys been on that, where you can, you look up your waterway, and, um, see whether it's impaired and what, like, what's known, it's a really awesome resource.
That's really cool.
I'll put that in the chat, cuz I, I use that with students sometimes, and it's pretty awesome.
Thanks.
And I'm, I've looked at ours a lot, because I usually use it as an example, for the students, before I have them do their own.
Alrighty, so, uh, yeah. The new assessment should be done, it was like I said, the last one was done seventeen years ago, and, no, there is no great push for an off-leash trail. Again, the one that says we may, does not say we have to, already, and like you say, there is no big push, we don't have to, and until, you know, people are comfortable with or without, it doesn't have to be decided right away. So, Roberta, you gonna check, see what Avalonia, who they use, and stuff like that, or what they can?
Yes, I will.
Already, okay. Is there any other old business coming for the commission? Alrighty, new business. Uh, make a motion that next month, the next month's meeting, would, that we, uh, select offices or whatever it is, positions for, uh, the Conservation Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, everybody, I oppose. Alright, motion carries. And please, people, don't be bashful. Alrighty. So, think about it for next time, and besides, I like to delay it till next time, because we have a couple of people missing, I wanna include them also, if you know what I mean, so that, I figure we'll be going next week.
Are you gonna forewarn them?
Uh, they did that in the commission. They appointed somebody, he signed up, and they said, you're treasurer. He said, you okay, what do I have to do? Alright. Is there any other, no, there is no other new business coming for the commission, uh, have a motion for adjournment then?
So moved.
So moved, seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, alright, motion is adjourned, it's at seven forty-five.
You did good, Mike.
I'm trying to beat, uh, Hillary, you know, I gotta keep the chairman's position there, you know, keep everybody happy.
Merry Christmas to everyone.
Yeah.
Christmas to everybody.
See you next year.
Inshallah.
Bye, everyone.